It is six o'clock and I'd like to call this meeting of the Glen County Board of Commissioners to order for Thursday, April 20, 2023. I have asked Commissioner Fendig to lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Clark to lead us in our pledge. If you would join with me standing please.
Amen.
Father, Jesus, amen. And we pray that you bring them understanding the loss. Pray for our leadership in action based on new struggles, new challenges, bringing the gifts of individual wisdom and vision to help our community be lost. Thank you for these blessings.
Amen.
Place flag please.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Tonight I want to read a proclamation for the Glen County Crime Victims' Rights Week. Proclamation of the Glen County Board of Commissioners, whereas the term victim is more than just a label and has legal standings and protection that goes along with it. And whereas Crime Victims' Rights Act passed here in Georgia and at the federal level guarantee victims that right, that right to meaningfully participate and use their voice in the criminal justice process. And whereas victim service providers, advocates, law enforcement officers, attorneys, and other allied professionals can help survivors find justice by enforcing these rights. And whereas the right to provide an impact statement ensures that victims' voices are considered in court during the sentencing and when applicable, excuse me, restitution processes. And whereas including and elevating the voices of survivors makes certain that they are heard and seen and creates a path to forging and sustaining community trust. And whereas engaging survivors creates responses and services that are credible, meaningful, and centered on individual needs. And whereas survivors' lived experience can serve as a catalyst for implementing innovative programs, shifting existing programs in new directions and changing policies or practices that prevent survivors from accessing services or pursuing justice. And whereas National Crimes Victim Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit to listening to crime survivors in every space where decisions are made that could impact them. And whereas the Glen County Commissioners are hereby dedicated to amplifying the voices of the survivors and creating an environment where survivors have the confidence that they will be heard, believed, and supported. Now therefore, I, Wayne Neal, as chairman of the Glen County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of April 23 through 29, 2023, as Crime Victims' Rights Week, reaffirming the county's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during Crime Victims' Rights Week and throughout the year and expressing our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. Proclaim this 20th day of April 2023 by my hand. Our DA, Keith Higgins, if you would come forward for...
We have to invite Detective Fisher, the camera.
Our official photographer.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda for general business unless anything needs to be pulled.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Rofolski, a second by Commissioner Booker to approve the consent agenda for general business. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to defer item 12 until a later date.
All right. Have a, under general business, a motion to defer item 12, which consists of our code ordinances for parks and recreation, to a later date.
Second.
Have a second. I have a motion by Commissioner Rofolski, a second by Commissioner Booker to defer item 12 to a later date. All in, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. Thank you. We have some public hearings tonight. I will announce that item number six, which is ZM 5339-198, South Road Rezone, the applicant withdrew the application for that. It was set to be heard tonight, but the applicant has removed that application, so it will not be heard. Correct, Mr. Attorney? All right. Item number seven is the same applicant, ZM 5340-171 and 179 Davenport Road Rezone. The applicant here withdrew his application as well, so that will not be heard tonight. Is that properly announced, Mr. Attorney? Okay. Thank you. Item number eight is ZM 5345-6735, New Jessup Highway Parcel Rezone. Consideration of an application to rezone a portion of a 79-acre parcel located at 6735 New Jessup Highway Parcel Number 03-26781 from Forest Agricultural, FA, and Mobile Home Park, MH, to Medium Residential, MR, zoning district. Wesley Franks, Robert Civil Engineering, Agent Farid Scott Lavavia, help me out, and Executive Real Estate LLC, and Ms. Leaf. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. This is ZM 5345. This application had originally come before the Men and Planning Commission as a rezone to Mobile Home District. So originally they were going to rezone the FA, a portion of the property, to Mobile Home District. There were a lot of concerns expressed at the Men and Planning Commission level by surrounding neighbors as well as Commissioners. So the applicants did go back to the drawing board and did decide to change their application to rezone both the mobile, the existing Mobile Home District on the property as well as... Home District on the property as well as the Forest Agricultural to Medium Residential, which is 16 units per acre and could be multifamily townhomes or single-family on that property. And so that, we did renotice it for our Mainland Planning Commission meeting, and they have first made a recommendation to you all. So there is some mixed zoning on the property. There's an area property along Highway 341, New Jessup Highway, that is zoned highway commercial. That will remain as highway commercial. They are not proposing any changes to that with this application. So it's the remaining property. It's about a 58-acre portion that would be rezoned to the multifamily MH zoning, I'm sorry, MR zoning. So currently in FA, there'd be one dwelling unit per 20,000 square feet, which would be the density, so approximately two units per acre would be the density allowed under FA. The Mobile Home District portion of the property would allow eight mobile homes per acre, and then in MR, there would be the 16 units per acre, as I mentioned. So there are a number of wetlands on the property as well as a very significant power line easement, so the developable area would of course be less than what they're, what they're showing is the 58 acres. But if you're just looking at sheer numbers, a 58-acre parcel, a maximum density would be 928 units, but because of the challenges on the property, they wouldn't never be able to get close to that. So this is the property right here. This is north of Oak Grove Island Road. This is Holtz Road, right here. So this HC is remaining, and then the FA, and then the purple MH is what's rezoning to MR. So the survey of the properties, this does show the power line easement. There's also an existing easement across the property to access these lots back here. And this is a proposed sketch plan for the rezone, just showing that all this area would be MR. The Mainland Planning Commission did unanimously recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of this, and these are your possible motions. And Wesley Franks from Robert Civil Engineering is here, as well as the applicant is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leaf. This is a public hearing. Public hearing will be limited to 30 minutes to each opposing side, with each individual speaker having five minutes to speak. We ask that if there is a group, a person speaking for a group, that one person would speak, and that you would avoid being repetitious. Being a public hearing, Commissioners, before we open the public hearing, do you have any comments before we... All right.
I have a question. Stephanie, you mentioned the, is it the utility easement? Can you show us what that is?
Yes, sir. It's a power line easement.
Power line?
Yeah, that runs across the property, parallel to Highway 341.
So, and where are they looking at, building houses? I mean, isn't there a concern about the impact of power lines near residential structures?
Yeah, there would have to be a separation, but they, they have not submitted a detailed plan yet for their development. I know the Mainland Planning Commission, they did during the meeting present a conceptual drawing to the commission. I'm not sure if the applicants are interested in doing that this evening or planning to do that this evening, but they have not formally submitted a development plan, so I do not know exactly where they're proposing at this time.
But they can build under the power line. It's a 50-foot easement. They're just going to cross it, but they can't build under it.
Right. Okay. I thought you said they can't build under it. Yeah, that's my concern. How close would the families be to this? Because the health impacts on those families and especially the children.
And that's, you know, during this process, if there is an interest in increasing a buffer, you know, adjacent to that easement, that could be something the commission could add as a condition.
That's the same power line that runs through River Ridge. Is that correct?
At Vocavilla.
At Vocavilla.
Okay.
It runs through a couple of, or several neighborhoods already.
So they should have a good map.
And a history, if there's any issues. But, sorry, Commissioner Clark?
Stephanie, is there any conversation about where they're going to come out on 341? Is it Holtz Road or back up Key Drive?
Yeah, they have not submitted their access plan yet, so of course the GDOT would have to approve any kind of new access onto 341. Applicants may be able to share more this evening if they've had further conversations with GDOT.
Yeah, because that's 341 of Walter, Commissioner Rofalski, and several of us travel out there. It's bad, and I mean, if we could find out a little bit more about where their intentions are, utilize the light at the red light. I know where the school is, that's a busy intersection, but having control with cars going out there, because 341 all the way back up is just heavy traffic. So that was my concern, if they had any idea of where they are going to access 341, you know, and make it easier on their, actually anybody that moves out there as well as anybody traveling there. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comment before we open the public hearing? This is a public hearing, as I stated before, for ZM 5345-6735, New Jessup Highway Parcel Rezone. If you are here to speak on this and you are in opposition of this rezone, would you please come forward, state your name for the record, please? Anyone to speak in opposition of ZM 5345? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion. Anyone that wishes to speak in favor of ZM 5345, please come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Wesley Franks, Robert Civil Engineering. We're here representing the applicant for this particular project. Just to answer a couple of questions that were brought up. So yes, there is a 50-foot, actually, let me confirm, I think it's a little bit larger than that. It's a 160-foot Georgia power easement that runs through that property, and we'll be well outside that easement for, you know, our future plans for the development of the area. And as far as the access is concerned, the commercial piece that you see there has a fairly decent amount of wetlands, you know, that goes through that property and behind it. So the access to 341 is fairly limited unless we were to impact that. Like Ms. Leaf pointed out, there is an existing access easement kind of up to the north there that, that provides access to those lots along the marsh there. Our intention is to maintain that access. Obviously, we'd have to coordinate with GDOT and provide them with the traffic counts and see if there's any impact for a diesel lane that may be required when we get to that point. But that's our proposed access point, ingress egress, and most likely we'll have an emergency access out toward the Holtz Road. So appreciate your vote tonight. We're obviously here in favor of the project.
Thank you, Mr. Franks. Anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of ZM 5345? All right. With seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we're back to you.
I'd like to say that... I'd like to say, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to say thank you to the, and I don't usually do this often, but thank you to the developer and Wesley and Robert's Engineering for going back and reworking this, because due to the fact that the last time y'all were here with your, with your plan, it was, you had a, we had an audience full of opposition. So undoubtedly, you heard, you heard from them, you went back and you, you refigured, you readdressed it, and you came back with another plan. And tonight, there's no one speaking in opposition against it. So kudos to y'all for doing that. And with that being said, I would like to make a motion. I move to approve ZM 5345 as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, a second by Commissioner Booker. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Next, item number nine, ZM 5397-25 East Gate Drive Plan Development District Amendment. Consideration of an application to amend the Plan Development District GC-34-99 relative to parcel number 0326831, located at 25 East Gate Drive, to allow dredging, landfill, or extraction of natural materials as permitted uses. Cameron Owens, Crown Investments of Georgia LLC, applicant and agent for Golden Isles Development Authority, owner. And Ms. Leaf, thank you.
This application is ZM 5397, and this property is located on the north end of Highway 17, just south of Harry Driggers Boulevard. That area is currently in industrial use. Future land use map and character area and comp plan do allocate this as a, as an industrial area. And what the applicant is interested in doing is the, is having a surface mining permit to allow fill to be transported, or dirt to be transported off the property, which is a requirement to get an EPD permit. My understanding from the applicant is that a lot of the dirt coming off this property will be used in the Highway 17 widening project. And so this is a use that they're adding into it. At the Mainland Planning Commission level, there were concerns about the ward landfill being in here, and so the applicant was fine with removing that, and so that is a recommendation that came from the MPC to all this evening, is to remove the ward landfill. So this is, this is East Gate at the end, the cul-de-sac, and then this is the property right here. We did have some questions from adjacent property owner along Highway 17. The applicant has had conversations with that landowner, and my understanding is those concerns are, have been addressed, and that individual did not come to the Mainland Planning Commission with any additional comments or concerns. This is a survey of the property, and the MPC did unanimously recommend to the board approval with the condition that the ward landfill is removed from permitted uses. And these are the possible motions, and staff has added in a recommended, recommended motion and condition based on the MPC's recommendation. So Mr. Cameron Owens is here as the applicant this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leaf. Before we open the public hearing, Commissioners, any comments?
Yes, that, the word landfill did throw me off.
Yeah.
So I'm glad we're removing that. Well, hopefully they'll remove it.
All right. Any other comments? This is a public hearing for ZM 5397-25 East Gate Drive Plan Development District Amendment. If there's anyone here to speak in opposition of that, would you please come forward, state your name for the record? To speak in opposition.
How y'all doing? My name's David Horton, and I don't think this project should happen. It's an industrial piece of land. It's for jobs for other people, and this guy really doesn't need another permit. The pits he's been putting in aren't right anyway. And like I said, I'm talking against it because it's an industrial piece of land. We have other dirt for 17. This dirt doesn't need to go to 17. We have two pits already done, and Glen County is, we've got trash going in different places all over Glen County. Our towns are starting to look kind of bad because we're dumping just anywhere we can. And these pits are, they're putting strippings back in it. The strippings are full of oil. So when you take the sides of that bank out, they won't support the building that you're putting on it. So these dirt people are getting real rich, and it's getting into our environment too much. And that's about all I got to say about it. I thank you, Todd. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to speak in opposition of ZM 5397? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close out that portion. Those that wish to speak in favor of ZM 5397-25 East Gate Drive Plan Development, please come forward, state your name for the record, please.
My name's Cameron Owens. I'm owner of Crown Investments of Georgia, and I would ask that y'all consider approving this as presented. We did research, you know, Mr. Horton's correct, this property is zoned industrial, but this was part of the gateway zoning plan development, and it is extremely broad. Some of the uses that are allowed on industrial in this particular zoning are farming agricultural, which is the, the current zoning that would allow surface mining if it were just a straight zoning. There's 42 fill dirt pits, most of which are retired within a two-mile radius of that property, so it's, it's very evident that it's visually compatible with, with the other uses in the area. And not only that, the adjacent property to the north and the adjacent property to the south, both have former barrow pits on them. So both neighbors on the north and south, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that I may be able to.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Owens. They'll, they'll call you back if you want to just sit on the front row. I don't know if, is there anyone else that would speak in favor of ZM 5397? Anyone else? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we're back to you.
My understanding on this particular piece of property is it was, it's owned by the Development Authority. They have used the property for what they have used it for, and this is basically unusable property at this point because of wetlands issues, and it seems like, in my opinion, this is the simplest and easiest best use for this property. It's going to be used, dirt, I understand, for the 17 widening, four-laning of it, but I, I think that it's, it's being used in the proper way. Due to the fact that if the Development Authority thought it had usable land as industrial, I feel like they would have held on to it, and they decided that that, that was not the best use for this property.
Commissioners, anything else? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve ZM 5397 as presented. Second.
Commissioners, the point of order, the Mainland Planning Commission voted to approve it based on removing the landfill there from the permitted uses. Do you, do you wish to amend your motion to include that exclusion? It's at the bottom of the motion, the page there. And I have a motion and a second. We can vote on that, or you can withdraw.
Or you can vote to amend your motion.
I vote to amend the motion.
And I need a second on that?
Second.
All right.
With the condition, correct?
With the condition.
No landfill.
The landfill has permitted use.
Right. Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page here. All right. So now we have a proper motion and a second to approve ZM 5397 with the condition that we remove the landfill from its permitted uses.
So this is a vote, Mr. Chairman, on the amendment. So if this is approved, then the amendment will be added to the, to the motion, and then you'll take another vote on the actually amended.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Clear as mud. So all in favor of amending the motion, then please raise your right hand. All right. Now, we can vote on the motion that's already been made and properly second.
And as amended.
All right. As amended. All in favor, please raise your right hand. I'm going to law school. All right. That is approved. Thank you. All right. Item number 10 tonight is ZM 5398-130 Capital Square Drive Plan Development District Amendment. Consideration of an application to amend the Plan Development District ZM 4776 relative to parcel number 03-03351, located at 130 Capital Square Drive, to allow dredging, landfill, or extraction of natural materials as permitted use. Cameron Owens, Georgia Land Grouping, owner and applicant, and Ms. Leaf, thank you.
Thank you. For ZM 5398, this is similar to the last application. This is also an amendment to the Plan Development District to add the dredging, landfill, and extract, extraction of natural materials, to have a bar, to actually to expand the existing pond. Development projects that are going into this area. Capital Square Drive is just off of Perry Lane, so is that exit 38. So there's a new apartment complex going in over in this area, and then another one kind of closer to along the, along the highway here. So the pond they're expanding is, is up in this area. So this is a shorter-term project because the development is coming in, so this is not going to be a long-term use of a barrow pit. not going to be a long-term use of a barrow pit. So this is the proposed development, and then this is the lake, and this is the proposed expansion off to kind of the right on the screen. And the Planning Commission did meet on April 4th and recommended approval with the same condition as the last application, removing the word landfill from permitted uses. And so these are your possible motions, and the recommended motion would be to approve with the condition that remove landfill from permitted uses. Mr. Owens is here for this application as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leaf. Again, this is a public hearing for ZM 5398, 130 Capital Square Drive Plan Development District Amendment. Anything, Commissioners, before we open the hearing?
Stephanie, you know how many units they're building?
I think, I'm trying to think offhand. Ms. Owens might know. I want to say it's, I think this one's at 200 or so, or Wesley, I was thinking Wesley Franks was still here. Yeah, I'd have to double check. I don't know offhand. I want to say it's around 200, though.
And Ms. Leaf, I think I know where it is, but can you give me my bearings?
Sure, absolutely. So Capital Square Drive has been expanded. Perry Lane is running up this direction. And so Capital Square Drive comes off, I think it's called Venture Boulevard, behind like the Best Western. The La Quinta Inn and Suites is kind of right over here. And then Capital Square Drive has been extended, and there's another complex going in back here. And then there's, this project is called Mission Properties.
So it borders I-95, correct?
Correct. Yes, exit 38 is.
That's where I thought, but I couldn't quite, I just wanted to make sure I was correct.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Venture, is that the road that runs by Toucans, comes out on, so all this is going to be dumping out right there at Toucans and about 50 foot from that red light?
Yes.
150 foot, okay.
All right. Anything else before we open the public hearing? This is a public hearing for ZM 5398, 130 Capital Square Drive. Any that wish to speak in opposition, would you come forward, state your name for the record, please? Any to speak in opposition? All right. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion of the hearing. Those that wish to speak in favor of ZM 5397, please come forward, state your name for
Cameron Owens, owner, applicant, and a couple of questions. Mr. Booker, the number of units for each of those two parcels, it's zoned for 17 units per acre. So both of, I think we're going to build a little bit less than that, but we heard 260 or so. I don't know what the final design was because that was after my involvement, but, and then, Mr. Tosterson, you had a question about the Venture Drive. There is two outlets for that road because it's a loop. So depending on which direction the trucks went, they would have the option of going towards Kate Road as opposed to, towards the Golden Os Parkway. So you could come out by Toucans or by the Dollar General down around the other side.
Yes, sir. That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Owens.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in favor? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion and close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we're back to you.
Mr. Owens, in reference to these, the recommended removal of landfill from the permit that the Mainland Planning Board recommended, do you have a comment on that?
Yes, sir. We're 100% fine with that. That just happened to be the language that I think the zoning for a surface mining, or I guess the appropriate zoning for surface mining includes the language as written there. But we have no intentions. In fact, we wouldn't even be applying for the zoning change other than Mission Properties needs additional retention, and we don't have anywhere else to put the dirt out there. I mean, it just, we used what is the dirt that came out of the original pond on site, but now, after they did a revised drainage study with the known use of the apartments that are going there, it increased the retention requirement. And what you saw tonight was actually from Mission, who we agreed, you know, when we marketed it to them, the retention was built, but we built it not knowing exactly what the end use may be. So it's not going to be a landfill, so we have no problem removing that.
Well, thank you. I just wanted your comment.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I say something? Scott?
Cameron.
I mean Cameron, yes. Excuse the sky.
I apologize. I apologize.
Oh, no problem. I just want to say it's good to see you.
It's good to see you.
Hadn't seen you in a while. Cameron grew up around the water. His dad and I were close, and Cameron was charter fisherman for a while, and I'm proud of the career you've made yourself and the good reputation you've established. I've heard nothing but good things.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
And what was the coordinates on that fishing hole? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Commissioners, anything else? Entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve ZM 5398 with the following condition, to remove landfill from permitted use. Second.
Have a motion from Commissioner Rofoski, a second by Commissioner Tosterson. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number 11, CUP 5311, 4320 New Jessup Highway Conditional Use Permit. The consideration of an application for a conditional use permit for a car wash at 4320 New Jessup Highway, a 1.38 acre portion of parcel 03-09150. This site is on Highway Commercial, H.C., Chris Amos, CSCC Incorporated, agent for A.H. Tosterson III owner. Ms. Leaf?
Thank you. This is CUP 5411, and a car wash is considered a conditional use in the Highway Commercial zoning district, so that is why this property is going through this process. So this car wash is going to be south of a proposed Wawa's Convenience Store and Fuel Station. It's going to be at the corner of Community and New Jessup. So this particular property for the car wash is 1.38 acres. Their proposed building footprint's about 5,000 square feet. There's going to be one automated tunnel car wash and one three-bay pay station. There'll also be 20 freestanding vacuum stations. And their operating hours, they've indicated is 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. daily. So this is the property with the star right here. And this is a proposed site plan. They will have a shared access coming off of 341 with Wawa, so there won't be a new access for just the car wash. So our proposed elevations. And the Planning Commission recommended 70, the approval of CUP 5411. During the Mainland Planning Commission meeting, they also had a site plan before them for this project, and there were several concerns that were discussed during the site plan process that, in talking with the county attorney, we felt it prudent to include these for your consideration as well because they were brought up as concerns by the Mainland Planning Commission. Prior to issuance of building permit, a detailed lighting plan to the county staff, there was concerns about excess lighting on the property. There was a neighbor across 341 that came to the meeting that had several concerns. And also the CUP, or I'm sorry, the site plan would be contingent upon the CUP being So these are your possible motions, and staff drafted a recommended motion based on some of the concerns of the MPC. So the recommended is move to approve with the following conditions. The car wash shall be in operation no later than 7:00 p.m. daily. And the second would be loud noises, including music, shall not be permitted on the site after 7:00 p.m. daily. There were, there were concerns about loud music playing during the car wash, you know, hours during the day that would be disruptive to residents in the area. And Chris Amos is here representing the applicant, and I'm happy to answer questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leaf. Commissioners, any comments, questions before we open the public hearing?
Yes, I have a question on, can you, yes, stand right there. So if you're traveling north on 341, the right-hand turn, so, and then as you're going in the car wash property, is that the, where you pay, the automatic pay machines?
Yes.
Like you're going to go through the tunnel?
Yes, yeah, you would come in, you're heading north, you would turn in here and then come through this area.
What is the distance from that to the turn-in, turn-in right there?
Yeah, that I can't see. So if I can defer to the engineer on this project, if I may.
I was just wondering like how many cars, like if it was real busy?
Yeah, the stacking.
Would back it up to block the right-hand turn right there?
Right. Yeah, that's a very good question. So if it's for the overflow, yeah, would it be backing back up to 341? So, yeah, hopefully he can address that when he comes up.
Any other questions? Ms. Leaf, I'd like to ask, why is a car wash a conditional use for a Highway Commercial zoning?
Yeah, you know, automobile service station or fuel pumps are also a conditional use. So it seemed like anything that was related to automobiles and Highway Commercial seems to be a conditional use because Wawa also had to get a conditional use permit for the convenience, not for the convenience store aspect, but for the fuel pumps.
Could, could we take a look at that going forward and see if we want to revise our ordinance sometime in the future, too? It seems like that would be an obvious use to me, so I don't know about the other Commissioners, but I'd like to explore that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I have a concern, and it may be because when you say automobiles, you think about oil, gas, and how it may impact the environment. So that may be why I say conditional use. And, and I don't know if you noticed, but Chris might know it, the runoff from the car wash and drainage, the requirements to recapture that, and then what is done with that?
Yeah, the treatment of that. Yeah, that would make sense if that's some of the reasons why that, that was considered conditional use instead of permitted, was so there'd be the opportunity to look at those issues.
Right. But anyway, I would like to know about the recapture.
The treatment, sure, absolutely.
Yeah, from the SUDs and, you know, the chemicals in that process. Thanks.
Anything else before we open the public hearing? All right. This is CUP 5411, 4320 New Jessup Highway. Any that wish to come forward and speak in opposition, please come forward and state your name. If you wish to speak in opposition, seeing none, hearing none, we'll close that portion. Those that wish to speak in favor of CUP 5411, please come forward, state your name for the record, please.
Good evening. Chris Amos, CSCC, and I'm here to answer any questions, and I can answer the two that have already been brought up. The first one about the traffic circulation into the car wash. So there are two different points of access into their parking. Both of them can feed traffic back down into the, to the pay stations. And so what we tried to do is allow enough room in our internal circulation to handle that overflow traffic when it's coming in. The recycling, all of the water used in the car wash is recycled. There are three 1,500-gallon tanks plus a 1,500-gallon oil-water separator. So the water's cleansed, it's recycled, it's used again. There is obviously a discharge of some of the water. You can't use it over and over again forever, and that goes into the sanitary sewer system and then goes to the treatment plant. So we're not going to be doing any, none of that goes into the stormwater system at all.
Would, would there be sewer for that?
There will be, yes. And they've already, there's two car washes very similar to this that are already in Glen County that are using the same proprietary recycling system, and that's gone, both of those have gone through the JWSC approval process.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
So the stormwater runoff in general, where does it go?
Well, there's a, I'm showing two stormwater detention ponds. I'm still waiting on a topo survey, so this site hasn't been engineered yet. But there's one pond that's up on the top of the sheet, and then there's another pond behind the building, and both of those will discharge into that ditch that runs south, that's south sheet-wise, from the top of the sheet to the bottom, which then goes into a six-by-six concrete box culvert into a very deep ditch that runs back to the Brunswick- Ottawa Canal, which is not very far from the site.
Could you repeat that about the Ottawa Canal?
So the Brunswick-Ottawa Canal is down below, it's below the screen, and there's a very large, so DOT, when they were doing one of the 341 projects, they put a six-foot by six-foot concrete box culvert under 341. And that box culvert discharges into a ditch that's about 15 feet deep, something like that. And then that ditch runs back to the Brunswick-Ottawa Canal, which is probably 300 or 400 feet away from, from this site.
Okay. So there, I guess the, the canal is a historic canal, right?
Yes, sir.
And so is there any permitting for that?
No, sir. It's not required. All of the stormwater from the Wawa is going to the same location, as is everything that's being collected by that ditch up in the railroad area. All of that is going in the same, in the same point of discharge.
All right.
Commissioners, any, any other?
The traffic, the first right there, you go capture a lot of traffic going north, Mr. Evans. And I realize the second entrance is to kind of, kind of give you more of a longer thing. I, me and my wife use these things, and they're very good, but one of the things, and I know y'all probably thought about it, when you first start now, y'all go maybe do that monthly package, and when people get in line, they have to fill out the paperwork.
Right.
And I've seen it stack up out at the Sam's one, we're already back out to that frontage road. So kind of, I don't know how you could do it, is maybe encouraging people to go to that second entrance so they've got that longer thing, because I'm not sure how, how far is it from your pay stands there, your pay lanes out to 341, but probably couldn't handle more than about four or five cars. But I noticed that from going to other ones, that when you first apply for that thing, you just stack cars up, so something to think about.
And they'll have to manage that process on that initial, when they first open up, to make sure that doesn't happen.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Is that it?
Commissioners, anything else? And we did close out the formal, we did close out the public hearing, correct? Believe we did. Chris, were you the only one to speak in favor? And just to make doubly sure, is there anyone else to speak in favor of CUP 5411? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, we will officially close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we're back to you. Any questions? Entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve CUP 5411 with the following conditions as presented.
Mr. Attorney, do we need to read those to the record?
I would, yes, sir.
With the following conditions, the car wash shall be in operation no later than 7:00 p.m. daily. Loud noises, including music, shall not be permitted on the site after 7:00 p.m. daily.
Thank you, Commissioner Booker. Have a motion by Commissioner Booker?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Swett. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed?
One abstained.
One abstained.
One abstained. All right. You abstained?
I abstained.
I'm sorry. I should have known that.
The cap did.
The cap did. So we have 5, 4, and I'm going to get it in just a second. Five in favor to make sure that we're speaking clearly, and two that have abstained. So that passes. So that passes. Item number 12 was deferred. Anyone sign up for public comment? No one signed up. We have no need for executive session tonight. So, gentlemen, bonus, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rafoski, a second by Commissioner Tosterson to adjourn, and I'm going to go put my teeth back in or something and make sure I can speak. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. We stand adjourned.